Alright, welcome everybody, thank you for joining us. Please rise with pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we are going to kick things right off with our Teacher of the Year and School Related Professional of the Year recognition. So I'm just gonna take a minute, my name is Mark Filberger, I have the honor of being the Board President. To my left, I have Ms. Sloan, Stephanie Sloan, who is the Vice President, Kayla Bennett, Kristen Price, Trace Blenner, Nancy Pickering, and Mr. Mascadra. So we appreciate you all being able to come and give us a chance to recognize you. And with that, I'll turn things over to Dr. Star.
Alright, just quickly, also want to introduce Adam Geist, Assistant Superintendent for Business, we have Mr. Ned Dale, Assistant Superintendent for Community Resources, and Mrs. Kristen Polini, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. So many, many moons ago, when I got into education and educational leadership, I had a mentor that as soon as I started to become a leader said, "Just always remember, it's people, not programs." It's people, not programs, and I always remember, it's people, not programs. And today, we celebrate the people, the great people here in the Hilton Central School District that really make it a great place and make it a place where people want to move and have their children educated. So before I turn it over to everybody who are going to do their introductions, I just want to applaud everyone. Congratulations and thank you for everything that you do for our students, it's greatly appreciated. (Applause) My name is Sonya Volkmar for Teacher of the Year, and then we'll also have SRP of the Year with Claudia Engel. So you guys are most of the seed ones to vote, you already did. Alright, there you go.
We already did.
Thank you.
We're actually helping each other out, so. Good evening, again, my name is Sonya Volkmar, I'm the chairperson of the Teacher of the Year Committee, and it is one of the best committees to be on because you get to hear wonderful things about the people that you work with, so it's really is a joy. So I'm going to introduce all of our finalists, they're not all here tonight, but I'm gonna blather and brag on them whether they're here or not. So our first finalist, who once again is not able to hear me say nice things about her in person, is Quest for Media teacher and 24-year veteran at Brenner Department Guard. She missed opening day due to grade jury duty, which I guess was supposed to be confidential until it was announced in front of the entire expression.[175.12][175.12](Laughter) So Brenda has been a finalist before, and she has tried to tell her colleagues to stop nominating her. So John Wunder, who did it before, he honored her wishes, but Debbie Bray didn't get the memo, and so she nominated her this past year. If you ask Brenda, she's just doing her job, of course she's going to make a room a safe space, offer appropriate levels of support and challenge, engage her students in inquiry-based learning. Brenda is an amazing support to her colleagues, especially the new teachers, but of course we need to look out for each other, it's just what you do. She may not love the recognition, but her light shines so brightly that people can't help it in this. My favorite quote was, "Her positive impact extends beyond the classroom, enriching the entire school community." So, she makes it, but, she's wonderful. Our next finalist is here, I'm so pleased to introduce to you Northwood 6th Grade Teacher and 28-year veteran, she started teaching at 12, Julie Hage.[233.12][233.12](Laughter) So Julie, you can come on up, you can be the first one.[237.62][237.62](Laughter) And then Claudia is going to hand to you a lovely package of congratulatory goodies. While I say nice things, wait, come on down. And then they're gonna shake over.[250.12][250.12](Laughter) Super not awkward![253.12][253.12](Laughter) Julie teaches math and individuals and societies as part of the AIM speech team, creating engaging learning experiences like math stories, classroom banding, Greek nicknames, and mini-vulaply, and she has even totally taken over the Glade Plug-In commercial. If you ask any kiddo who's been in AIM speech and you go "plug," and then they will instantly go, "Plug it in, plug it in," like this, in their psyche forever. 6th grade can be an awkward age, but Julie creates a positive environment where social emotional support meets high expectations, and as a result, her students adore her. And then my favorite quote, "Mrs. Hage can be both serious and hilarious."[295.12][295.12](Laughter) Julie has served as a grade-level leader and student facilitator, and she also helps plan school-wide social events to bring staff together and her colleagues' dates. You can sit right back here. Julie is constantly working within our school community to make it better for staff and students. We consider ourselves lucky that we get to work with her, and I agree with her. Amy Perkins is our next finalist, she's not here with us tonight, but Amy is beginning her 20th year in Hilton. She is described by her students and her colleagues as dedicated, creative, thoughtful, and generous. And one of her students says, quote, "She's carried, funny, and she always makes them very fun." And Amy has consistently invested in her future colleagues, she takes on two student teachers a year so she can share her wisdom and give them a safe space to hone their craft. And anyone who's ever had a student teacher knows the emotional energy that requires, twice a year, every year. She is just such an amazing human. If that were not, Amy is a member of the Leadership Council as a grade-level leader for 3rd grade, and she's an active member of the Quest for BTSO. So Hilton is a better place than Amy Perkins is in it. Our next finalist, who is here, yay, is our High School Counselor, Ashley Foster. Ashley is a 2004 Hilton grad, and she's starting her 12th year working in Hilton. Ashley is a safe space when students need emotional support and is working with the Local Advisory Council for organizing college fairs and financial aid nights. Ashley excels in helping students chart the path that's right for them after graduation. She's also a tireless advocate for her department, bringing their voice to the table at the district and Hilton levels. She's a member of the HTSTA Executive Board as treasurer, as treasurer, and she is actually a lot of different, she has, the list of her activities and involvement is long, and I would be here a very long time to name everything. On the slideshow that was prepared, it was literally three different slides, and the font wasn't very big.[413.81][413.81](Laughter) It's incredible, and everything on there benefits the Kedent community. And my favorite quote was from Michael Brook Gay, who said, "Remove any one person from our team and make them manage, as long as it's not Ashley Foster. She is the Gorilla Glue that holds this place together." So, I love that one. Nothing like me compared to Gorilla Glue.[434.12][434.12](Laughter) But, you know.[436.12][436.12](Applause) And our next finalist is also a Hilton grad, which I just absolutely love, the fact that our students come back as teachers and they are exceptional. It is high school English as a new language learner teacher Ruth Percy. Ruth was in Class of 99, and has been teaching in Hilton for 20 years. Her students come from different parts of the world with varying educational backgrounds, and all of them lack English proficiency. She is so knowledgeable about the needs of her students and is an amazing resource for other teachers who work with them. For her students, overcoming these language barriers and cultural barriers can be so overwhelming, but Ruth's optimism for creative use of technology, her interactive lessons, they all serve to support her students, and one of them said, "She gives us hope for success even when I might want to give up." Ruth creates a safe home base for her students, she validates their cultures by celebrating special holidays and often learning some of their language, and there's a lot of languages represented. Years after her students graduate, her influence remains. Her one student said, "She held all of us like we were her own kids." Our next finalist is Village 3rd Grade Teacher Alyssa Casper. Alyssa is our newer kid on the block, she's taught in Hilton for five years, but already in that short time, she has proven to be a dedicated teacher, passionate professional, and valued colleague. According to her students, "Mrs. Casper makes everything fun, especially science. She's sweet and nice even when we make mistakes." And, quote, "She pushes me to be a better student." She forces same energy into her colleagues as a mentor, supporting new teachers in that critical first year. She's a member of the Leadership Council as a grade-level leader and part of the Wordful Literacy Team. In all of her various roles, Alyssa's, quote, "Positivity and dedication are contagious." And this makes me happy too, to see young people just thriving in this profession. Yay! And our final finalist, by virtue of the alphabet, and who is here tonight, yay, is Burton Williams Visual Arts Teacher Bill Sniff. Bill has taught for 19 years in Hilton and is currently the Program Coordinator for the Catechol Art Department. Bill's energy, optimism, and well-timed dad jokes encourage his students to express themselves creatively regardless of their challenges and struggles. Because for those who struggle with that level of creativity, art can be very intimidating. "Oh, I can't draw." His students don't say that, they know they can draw. Bill is also a collaborator for the Burton Williams 5x5 Charity Art Show, the one-night-only art music fest, as well as district-wide empty goals. He's also coached softball, and then an actor and color commentator for softball and hockey games. And then, again, the list is long. You add to that Art Club, Student Council, and countless random acts of cohesion kindness. Meat pumpkins? Want to paint them? I'll help that. You want this? You want me to draw for kids? I'll do that. Want me to wear Spiderman costume? I did not. Picture up, I was certain.[608.32][608.32](Laughter) He does, you, he's your man, right? So it doesn't surprise me at all to hear his colleagues say that Bill is everything we want to be as teachers. He makes Hilton a better place for our students to learn and grow. So, congratulations.[622.12][622.12](Applause) I was nice to make you say that. And now I'd like to introduce the 6th Teacher of the Year Award winner, Burton Williams Librarian Angela Bakuti-Rieckert.[634.82][634.82](Applause) She is joined by her husband, Technology Teacher Jim Rieckert. Both of her children are Hilton grads, General Henry James, Class of 22, and 24. Angela has been investing in her students for 131 years. She started as a teacher's assistant, then she became Special Education Teacher, and finally as a librarian for the past 20 years. She is a card catalog in human form. If you need a book, okay, for a reluctant reader who likes martial arts, she can name multiple titles off the top of her head. I, if she, Angela, do you want to answer that? I'm not even gonna say that. Reluctant reader, martial arts. Yeah.
Probably, okay, wait a minute. I have to go martial arts.
Sorry. Anime.
Oh, no, I have one that's silver sword fighting and a figure. I've seen covered blue, white, yes.
Right![698.32][698.32](Laughter) I say these things and I promise I'm not exaggerating. And she is beyond her beloved books, and she knows everything that she has in that library. Angela's instruction extends to Lego engineering kits, escape boxes, herb seedlings, word farms, rocket building, puffed and carving, egg hunts, actual egg set catch into real chicks. And wherever she is, whether it's in the library, in the classroom, out in the community, traipsing around Washington DC, she creates a space of acceptance, accessibility, and belonging. She has poured countless hours and boundless energy into meeting the needs of thousands of students, gifted students, Special Education students, neurodiverse students, marginalized students, average students with no obvious struggles but who still need a safe space to learn and figure out who they are and why they belong in this world. In everything she does, Angela is, quote, "An amazing collaborator. Her love of learning inspires everyone around her."
I got a book, Harwood's.[754.41][754.41](Laughter) (Applause)
And now I'd like to introduce Claudia Engel, who will present the SRP of the Year finalist. I'll take her. Alright, I got you.
Very awesome. Hey. Good evening. My name is Claudia Engel, I'm the SRP of the Year Chairperson. And it's my honor to present to you the 23, 24 SRP of the Year nominees. The Hilton Central School Employees Association represents a wide group of employees who are supporting our students, teachers, and administration. All nominees need to be dues paid members of the Hilton Central School Employees Association for at least five years. Each individual has been recognized as a noble people for the significant contributions to our community and for the outstanding work with students, teachers, and coworkers consistently going above and beyond expectations. Be a very proud to have them in our district. They are truly resembling our Kedent intentional values. I now have the privilege to introduce our nine nominees, in that sort of ethical order, and tell you what people have said about them. First one is Darlene Clark, who will see you tonight. She is knowledgeable, kind, and approachable, and she has a great sense of humor. Darlene has also worked on many school plays over the years and enjoys her time helping students to thrive in their element. We have witnessed on many occasions Darlene's unique ability to bring out the best in people of all ages and abilities. Darlene always has a positive attitude and is patient even on occasions when she may be met with indifference. She creates a wonderful and kind relationship with everyone, always willing to help. Marcy Gardner. She is an administrative assistant, Athletics and Physical Education at Hilton High School. The Athletic Office could not survive without the hard work and dedication of Marcy Gardner. She is often the frontline for coaches, teachers, parents, students, and community members. She is truly the backbone of what makes Hilton Athletics run. She is an addition of Hilton pride in what it means to love what you do. She is a huge fan of Kedent sports, often at games cheering our students' athletes on. She drove the Hilton mascot all the way out to LSCC to bring the Hilton spirit to the game. Number three is Tom Gavin, Daygast Assistant Support and Reporting at Central Office. Tom is always positive and has a smile on his face. He provides outstanding knowledge of incident campus and student information. Tom is a huge asset to the Hilton Central School District with his knowledge and commitment to excellence for the district. He is so smart and savvy in tech work. Tom is kind, patient with everyone, and always happy to help. He has probably at some point helped every single person in the district. Number four is Sandy Hicks, Teaching Assistant in the Burton Williams Library. That'd be hard right there. Students seek her out for help with work but also just to make conversation. Sandy has created a safe environment for students. She is willing to help teachers with anything they need for their lessons. She is willing to put her students through their free periods, and she's always calmly break down content to keep the most of the love consumed. Sandy is a team player and happily collaborates with others. Sandy's kindness, patience, and unwavering dedication makes her a true asset to our schools. Number five, Joe Mattos, Feener at Village Elementary. My hero, by the way, without him, nothing will happen. Mr. Joe exudes patience, a sense of humor, and most normally kindness when it comes to interacting with some of our students in special needs. He's quick to respond, so helpful, and always helps everything with his mind. Joe Mattos is one of the silent heroes at Village. Without hesitation, Joe does whatever he can to help the teachers and staff every day. He is always willing to lend a hand even if it's not in his job description. He cares about our students and community. Jean Crowrock, she is a retired Guidance Secretary at the Hilton High School, just retired in June, but we still wanted to mention her. This is what people said about her, and Jean is a dedicated employee who goes above and beyond to do her job in a kind and efficient manner. She has contributed to collaborative and fun work. Number seven, Sandra Rockefeller. She is right here.[1070.12][1070.12](Applause) She takes pride in her work and ensures that students are safe on the bus. Sandra is always kind, welcoming, places people first, and is positive. She is the lead of our Internal Transportation Association that organizes food drives, lunches, birthday celebrations, and parts for staff that are ill or have experienced a loss of their families. Sandra Lee Spiney. Number eight, Donna Trobia, Teacher Assistant at Northwood.[1118.12][1118.12](Applause) She makes students feel affirmed and welcomed every day. Her positive relationships with students are shown very clearly when she walks into a room. The students light up and are eager to share their personal anecdotes. Donna's plays initiative, creativity, and contributes to the school system daily in effect, advocating for her students in supporting some of our neediest learners in natural, effortless approach. She is always there to listen when I need someone to talk, she is my trusted adult. Okay, our last one is Jeanie Whiting, Teacher Aid at Village Elementary. Jeanie is an incredible coworker. She is always willing to learn and to help when she is needed. Jeanie is one of the most organized and respectful persons you can work with. I have had the privilege to work with Jeanie, and she was always someone I couldn't count on. The students that she works with are very lucky to have, a person who is caring, friendly, and has a heart of gold. Unfortunately, our SRP of the Year, Marcy Gardner, couldn't be here tonight, it's sports season.[1196.44][1196.44](Laughter) And she is running around with a hat of cattle. So, but I would like to thank all nominees who showed up tonight, and that's it for me.[1210.23][1210.23](Applause)
Awesome job, guys, I appreciate it. Everyone who is nominated in our Teacher of the Year and SRP of the Year emulate and model each and every day integrity, being welcoming and affirming, putting people first, and being like flown orders. So, we can't thank you enough. I'd like to thank Michelle McHugh, our district clerk, for bringing out the cookies. We're gonna take a little break, have a little reception, and then you guys can get on your way, but please come on up and mingle, and we'd like to talk to you a little bit more, and then we'll get you out of here. Yeah, absolutely. Wheels up. Awesome, thank you.
Moving on, we will start with administrative reports, with district updates, Dr. Star.
Good evening, it's great to see everyone. Once again, just want to congratulate all the great people that we celebrated tonight. So, they make a big difference here for kids on a regular basis, and we're extremely thankful for that. I'd also like to thank everyone who participated in putting the tour together tonight. I hope you were impressed, it's a real point of pride, I know, for the administration and everybody involved in making these things happen. Just really impressed with the learning spaces you can provide students, and also the safety features that you saw tonight. That's been a lot of work, and we greatly appreciate everybody who's been working on that. We had an amazing homecoming week, I want to thank all our staff for helping make memories for our students. That's what we're here for, and I think there were a lot of memories made, and they were made in a safe way. We had between 3,000 and 4,000 people at the Homecoming Game. I'd like to thank Jeff Wheaton, Dave Inzanna, our chaperones, youth assistants, Monroe County Sheriff's Office, the Hilton Fire Department, the Special Police, and the Executive Cabinet for making a safe, welcoming, and affirming environment for our guests. Thanks to Dr. Green for making the parade, probably one of the best I've ever participated in here at Hilton. We have so many students that march at the parade, but there were so many students at the parade, it was, it was just a real great evening, great weather, no one was injured by Mark's throwing a candy, so that was a good event. We appreciate that.
I was a bit sad.
He almost injured himself, yes, but we're glad that you're okay. Thank you. Also, New York State has required regionalization study of the state, so I want to thank in advance Kristen Polini, Trace Zabado, and a bunch of our team members will be working on that. I had a lot of time to discuss that with some of my colleagues over the weekend. This has been happening for a while, I know Hilton really does a great job with making sure that we have shared services and we utilize and make the best decisions we can for our children that are also economically in line with our community, and we'll continue to do that. And this is, it's interesting, you know, it's the state's idea, but it's been happening for quite some time. And really, I think the emphasis is to make sure that there's equitable education across the state. So, we will, we'll continue to work there, and I know that we're receiving some support from Monroe One OCS, and we greatly appreciate that. I also want to congratulate our Crimson Kedent Marching Band for finishing first place at the Crimson Classic. Many of you were there, it was a great evening. It's amazing how many people we hosted that, and it was very enjoyable for everyone who participated, and very proud of the Crimson Kedent Marching Band for taking first place. And last but not least, back by popular demand, the Homecoming Dance was a huge success. So, this is another example of student voice here in the Hilton Central School District. As part of our strategic plan, we continue to look at ways to provide our students with voice, and through the Principal Advisory Committee and through Student Council, they decided to move from a winter semi-formal to a homecoming dance, and it really capped off the weekend, and it was a huge success. So, between the Girls on the Gridiron, all of the ambulance competitions we had, the football game, which was a large event, and then the Homecoming Dance, we were able to navigate that with minimal, no incidents. So, once again, applause to everybody who really made it an enjoyable experience for all of our students. And that's everything I have for you tonight.
Next up, we have Ms. Polini.
I have an update for you this evening on the Blue Ribbon Commission's Warbird Graduation Measures. Last week, I was able to attend a session for instructional leaders at OCS's on the Blue Ribbon Commission's. Updates, they will be presenting their recommendations, rollout, or timeline, and the possible changes to any regulations this November at the upcoming Board of Regents Meeting. So we will have more information to provide at the end of November. This is kind of a recap from the PowerPoint presentation that was shared statewide in June. There are four main transformations right now that will be in that rollout and timeline recommendation. The first is the adoption of the New York State Portrait of a Graduate, which aligns very nicely to our career profile traits and approaches to learning, our ATLs in the IB program. So for us, that makes a lot of sense, it supplies a lot of things that we do here with our instructional program. The second large transformation is a redefinition of credits. That's probably the area that is still most nebulous to us and what that might look like. Last week, we were able to give some feedback to the state on both opportunities and challenges, redefining those credits. So instead of content area credits that you would check out as completed, they'd be looking at demonstrations of proficiency in the eight areas of the Portrait of a Graduate. So what that looks like remains to be seen, but the goal there is to do that through expanded learning opportunities. So, the philosophy here is more CTE, more work-based learning, more service learning as part of that redefinition of credits and the different ways that students can show proficiency in those Portrait of a Graduate components. The third transformation has to do with, this is the one that made the news, the sunsetting of Regents exams as a graduation requirement. So it's an important distinction that Regents exams will still be created, they will still be administered, there'll be one way students can choose to demonstrate their proficiency towards meeting the Portrait of a Graduate components, but they will not be required for graduation. Again, timeline on that still remains to be seen, so students should still expect to take, pass their Regents exams for the foreseeable future in order to graduate from New York State. Along with that, the fourth transformation is the move to one diploma type. So instead of a local diploma, a Regents diploma, and Regents Advanced designation, there'll be one diploma, but that diploma may look different student to student based on the number of endorsements and/or seals that students could use, or could earn, excuse me. So, a lot of questions, and that really feeds into what Dr. Star talked about with the regionalization, so we talk about looking through the strengths and needs in school districts. I think a lot of that has to do with that redefinition of credits and expanded learning opportunities, and trying to figure out what the state's capacity is to give that equally across all the different regions in New York State. Next up date, final thing for tonight, is maybe a little bit more fun, that is to remind you that this coming Saturday, the Hilton Education Foundation will be holding its third annual cornhole tournament. Hilton Education Foundation is one of our associated organizations that does a lot of great work to donate scholarships and opportunities for our students. It's not too late to sign up, I did slide down some flyers if you'd like to register your team. I do believe people can show up the day of with a team and be part of the tournament as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions I can have on updates from the Office of Instruction.
Great, next up we have Mr. Dale.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate all of our nominees again, and winners for SRP and Teacher of the Year. Again, Casey said it right when we say people, not programs, so people make the difference here, and it's been a pleasure to continue to hire just outstanding candidates in Hilton Central Schools, and seeing them do so well in their new positions. Just a couple of updates tonight, first on the Fitness and Wellness Committee. All of our buildings and including transportation have fitness and wellness initiatives that will be kicking off this fall. As you might remember, I received a $2,500 grant from Exelis, and they have been doing anything from water bottles, to coffee mugs, to t-shirts, to different incentives to try to include with our staff, and so, again, all of those fall initiatives are off and running. Speaking with that kind of topic, as part of our Goals in Community Resources, Brittany and I went out and again had a great meeting with Scott Zabrowski and all the cook managers. Our goal is to improve systems and do some listening, and again, be visible on how we can help and support those systems. I really want to give Scott Zabrowski a really kudos. He has done such a great job with those cook managers, just to listen to the number of breakfasts and lunches that we are now serving under the Community Vision Project, I mean, just impressive. And what I can tell you is, these cook managers are so committed to serving our students, it was kind of, it was overwhelming to just listen to their stories. It was kind of, it was overwhelming to just listen to their stories about, you know, we wanted to make sure, you know, that we're getting, that we're efficient, that we're getting students to rhyme, so that they get the maximum amount of time to eating. So, you know, there were some different pieces that they spoke about, which again, I think I can be helpful with, with their team, and just the importance of data being accurate, right, and class rosters. And I never really understood that, because I was a middle school principal for so long, right? We just sent the entire sixth grade, right? They served them in eight minutes, they ate in four, right? And then they sat around for another eighteen minutes, so it was really neat to listen to their systems. They are going to do software, so they think that they can improve some of those things. But it was nice to hear them reflect about the increase in the amount of meals that they're serving, but also how they're making sure that students are getting what they need. So, and it is, just to kind of finish that off, we, as we look ahead to our wellness policy, met with Kristin, Jeff Wheaton, and Scott Zabrowski today, as we'll be reviewing the wellness policy again for this, in the next week. That'll be coming to you, I would imagine, in future weeks and in the next month or so. But also looking at completing the state's required triennial assessment, and so, we all kind of took a bite of the apple, and we're gonna be completing that as a team. And again, just improving our systems to make sure we're all doing our part. So, and that's all I have for now.
Mr. Grace.
Just wanted to echo what Casey said about the board tour. Not only did you get to see some of the work that was done through the Capitol Project and the contractors that we use, but you also got to see the really talented maintenance mechanics and D and G staff in some of the spaces that they had to hand in creating. So, kudos to them, and they really are great spaces for teaching and learning and working here in the district. And it really is cool to see the collaborative nature between the Buildings and Grounds Department and the users of the end space. That is one thing that Mark brought to the district is, we used to have great spaces in the past, but people get to them and say, ooh, I wish we could have done this, or this, or changed this around, and we're really trying hard and working with each and individuals, whether it's Kristy down at Technology, whether it's Jeff Wheaton with Athletics, wherever the case may be, in order to make sure that the end use of that space is something that everybody can be really proud of. The last thing I had is just an update on state reporting. For those who've been on the board for a long time, you know that we have to provide a whole host of reports to the state. They're due in early September, we never meet that deadline, I don't know if there's anybody in the, in the state that meets that deadline. We have to get it in, and our, our goal is to get it in by the first of October. We really need to get it in by like, end of October, and we're for the information that we provide to get in for the governor's run for that November cutoff date. So, we are well on our way, Jim and I have been working to get all that information uploaded into the state system, and I just wanted to give you an update of kind of where we are, we still have some work to do, but we're progressing nicely through that. That's all I have for now.
All right, we don't have any public comments, so we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the September tenth meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September tenth meeting? Nancy, vote a second. Christine, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Seven oh. Next up, we have board member reports. I thought I would give a, a quick rundown of the month ahead for my report. So, on October first, as a reminder, we all have our work session, where we'll be discussing our self-evaluation that we completed, so that will be a six fifteen start. We will have dinner from Bozey Joe's, and then we have a regular meeting on the eighth, the only one for the month. And then on the twenty-eighth, we have an executive session. And then in between there, some of those are going to be news. So, just please check your calendars, I will send an email out as a reminder for next Tuesday, and kind of just a brief agenda of what we're gonna take up. That's all I got.
Perfect. Homecoming was great, the parade was beautiful, the weather was beautiful, and so many students and families out there, it was great. The only update, other update I have is I sent you guys the PowerPoint and attachments for the district operations meeting, and Kristin, you were there in person, right? And on cellphone policy, which you're fairly familiar with from grief, but it's, it's interesting to take a listen to, give you a chance, so.
All right. We should just say happy birthday to Mark.
Oh.
That was part of what, what we need to recognize our president, had a big birthday, so happy birthday to you.
I appreciate you guys.
We were not able to attend the marching band competition because we got, it was strapped forties into the new school year, so here is hoping for us helping the rest of the school year, maybe we just get it all out of the way in September. And last week I was able to participate in the District Improvement Team Committee. Ms. Palini does a really great job of having these Zoom meetings be very engaging, which is a lot for my A D D room, but it moves along, there's collaboration, and it is a really productive meeting. So, thank you for all of that hard work. It was a great meeting, I did notice that there was a few more parents on the committee, which is exciting. We spent some time going over the data from the Panorama survey that was given to staff, teachers, and students, and then making sure that our data kind of aligns with the district's strategic goals and action plans, and majority of the committee feels like they are, and it feels like we're in the right direction on a lot of that work. A couple takeaways from my reflection on the meeting is just that, some of the data, in particular from teachers, feeling like they're learning a lot of pedagogy behind culturally responsiveness and being able to navigate hard, like, diversity topics with our students, and just making sure that our learning is kind of translating to the everyday experience for our teachers, and kind of similarly for some of our students. I think we're not in a different boat than anyone else in the state or in, in the country, really, don't know the right answer of how to make everybody feel like this, this work is where it needs to be, maybe it never will be where it needs to be. But I think having some more opportunities to hear from students about what their everyday experience is, and making sure that what we're doing for professional learning is translating into the day-to-day for our kids. And then thinking about some of the surveys, there was a lot of talk about like the time of year that the survey was given, and that's always tricky with those kinds of feedback opportunities, and so, just thinking, how can we hear from more students and community members, just because there's been some discussion even at board meetings, that this board needs to continue to be a focus for us. And again, we are working on it, I know it's a big focus, but just making sure that our students are feeling welcomed in our spaces as much as possible, so. That is it for me.
It's been a really good kickoff to the school year. I've been at a bunch of different events. I went to the Information Exchange in Monroe County School Board Association, the topic was about the role that board members play, along with the superintendents, which is always good to have like a little review of. I did go to the Crimson Classic on nine fourteen and got to see Hilton and my nephew who's in Greece and some other bands, they did a great job. It's always a very nice event, very nice way to start the school year. I went to open house at the high school on the seventeenth, which is my very last open house I have to go to for my children, which was thrilling. But they did a really nice job, they changed the way that they were doing open houses here, so instead of having to follow your kid's schedule, ten-minute presentations at a time, they did this whole like, gather in by departments and common areas, which I have to tell you was fantastic, because, you know, I didn't have to get there at six o'clock, I could get there at quarter to seven, I could just wander around, meet the teachers, gather the information, and, and be done. And I think it actually ended a half hour earlier than it normally does for the teachers, which I thought was really, and the staff, which I thought was really nice. I went to the Monroe County School Board Association District Operations Committee, which Stephanie was referencing, and they did talk about cellphone collection, the model was Greece. I felt like it was okay, I've, I've seen yonder couches used to collect cellphones. I think they talked a lot about the upsides, I know that there's a lot of downsides, being a school that has tried to use yonder couches, so I don't know that, personally, I don't know that that's the way, but it was good to get some information from a district as to how it's working for them. I did attend the Hilton Homecoming Parade, which, as everybody else said, was a beautiful event, beautiful weather, lots of attendance, and then I did hear from my daughter who attended the homecoming dance, that it was fantastic. She was really excited about how beautiful they made the gym, the decorations in the gym, and she said there was tons of food, and she loved seeing all of the staff members that were chaperoning, and I just, it, it was really nice. I mean, to have that dance come back, I think it's just nice to have that coincide with all of the homecoming events. Not that the winter formal wasn't fun, it is, but, but I think the kids really enjoyed it, like they were, I saw so many pictures of people across the district posting their kids all dressed up and having a good time. So, thank you to all the staff that made that happen, and the students who asked for that to happen, I think it was a really great event for the kids. I do not have a report tonight.
Attended, participated in the Information Exchange on board goals and responsibilities. It was great to hear from other districts on how they approach mentorship and training and sharing information as board. There was also a social, which was very nice, very nice, from what I'm looking at. Cadet Classic with the marching band, that was a great event. District Ops was the Greece cellphone policy. I appreciated Mike Zappett's comment about, the teachers love it, the kids hate it, and the parents aren't sure. And that was kind of like a summary of the whole thing. It was good that they had a lot of data on what they were doing, and, and then also the, kind of the feedback from teachers, what the teachers were saying, and the decrease in mental health issues, that sort of thing. It, it'll be interesting how it plays out within different districts, and hearing from, I think Ms. Bo is having some talks on that too. I was able to attend Joanne Manci's retirement party, which was fantastic. She has impacted so many people, so many families, so many administrators in Monroe County and beyond. It was a lovely, lovely homecoming parade and the game. I actually want to thank Dave Inzanna and the security team, it was very well-run, it was nice to feel safe in such a crowded, chaotic environment. That was impressive. Also want to thank Dave Yates for his photography. I only see it on Twitter, X, but you really capture the feeling of being a cadet. It's, it's beautiful, thank you. Policy committee meeting this Thursday. Next week, October second is Legislative Committee, and they will be talking about the position of papers that we have through the Monroe County School Board Association. October fifth is fiscal training for new board members. We have a lot of people, and thanks to ASBO and our local group, we have a lot of business officials from different districts presenting the different aspects of that, and it's really a great way for board members to hear examples from their own district on, on how important it is to, you know, be aware of the fiscal situation here for, for this. That's it.
So, I too attended the Crimson Classic, it was a great experience. Also attended homecoming several athletic events, they all were great, just to echo the board members. I also want to commend Casey, Adam, and Kristin on the tour, having a review of the safety measures that the district has taken, that has really set, what I would say, the district apart from other districts in Monroe County. Putting the safety of the, the kids in this district first is very evident, and much appreciative of the work that you're doing, so thank you.
All right, moving on, we have the consent portion of the meeting with an addendum. This goes all the way up through us. Do I have a motion to approve the consent portion of the meeting? Nancy, vote a second, Christine. Any discussion on the consent with the addendum? All in favor? Seven oh. We have an additional addendum under new business. An intermunicipal agreement between the district and Monroe County Sheriff's Office. So, just looking for approval on this agreement.
So move.
All right, do I have a second? Nancy, any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. All right. And that brings us to the end of the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Ed, do I have a second? Healy, Healy? All any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Seven oh. Thank you, guys.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.